It is six thirty one P M on Wednesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five. This is Brian Layton, the school committee chair. I am calling the school committee meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. If you please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next up on the agenda is the is public comment. We do have Ms. Bozowski and Mr. Beardmore also on Zoom. Mr. Layton and Mr. Skull and Brady and Ms. Arshinbo are present. So we'll open the public comment from the public. If you could raise your virtual hand or come up to the mic if you're in person.
Hi, Mandy Gilman, one eighty six Reservoir Road. I'm just calling because, as many people know, I've been doing some advocacy work with our state legislators about more school funding. A group of parents and I met with both sets of legislators, the Senator John Cronin and our two reps, Rep. Scarsdale and Rep. Kuschmerich, over the last few weeks. I would encourage anyone who's listening to this, if you would like to reach out to them, please send them an email and tell them how devastating the budget cuts are for our school district. They are all big supporters of getting more money, but they need to hear from us. They need to continue to hear from us. They need to hear from us multiple times, even if you've already sent them an email. Send them another email. It's just really important because they have to go to leadership and get more support. And if they can say they got a hundred emails from their constituents, that's, you know, more convincing. There's a few things I wanted to let people know about. I know these are during the day, which isn't great if you work a full-time job, but I'm just letting people know. There's a hearing on Monday, March twenty fourth, this Monday at eleven A M. at UMass Amherst. This is a hearing only for invited members of state government to testify, but it's the education hearing, so there'll be a lot of education officials there testifying. I'm gonna go. I know there's a lot of other groups, including North Middlesex and Amherst and other schools that are having difficulty with funding, that are going to show up. If you want to come, join our Facebook group or, I guess, send an email to one of the members of the school committee and they can forward it along to me. And I'm happy to coordinate with people if you're not on Facebook. Number two, there's a public hearing on Tuesday, April eighth, at eleven A M. in Boston at the State House. This hearing is an opportunity to actually speak. I've already been in touch with them. I'm going to make some testimony. I'm hopeful that maybe some other members of this committee or of the select board or maybe the superintendent, some folks we've been coordinating or I've been asking basically behind scenes to get people. And I think we definitely have some willingness for folks to come and testify. These are opportunities for people besides our state legislators, people who are, you know, making budget decisions to see the problems with school funding across the state. And lastly, I am organizing a Zoom call next week. It's next Wednesday night at eight P M. Again, it's in our Facebook group or if you aren't on Facebook, send one of the school committee members an email and they can forward it along to me because I don't really have a school email or something yet. And we're gonna talk about state advocacy and we're also gonna talk about possible override advocacy. I know that's something that's still sort of in the works. For those of you who aren't aware, a group of parents did file an override ballot initiative for two million, a little over two million dollars. I think some decisions need to be made about, you know, what, you know, I that's really all I have to say about it right now. I do just want to urge the members of the school committee to think about if the select board is thinking about. So I've heard through the grapevine, the select board is also considering adding things to that override number if we decide to file an override. I am not against other departments in the town getting money that they need, but no one else had any problems up until the moment the override got filed. So let's not make it so big that it'll never pass. That's it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the public?
Brianna Proctor, one forty one Gilcrest Street. I'm a two thousand and eleven graduate of Lunenburg High School and I also coach girls' basketball and softball for the high school. I'm here to advocate to save the proposed administrative cut to L M H S. It is incredibly short-sighted to remove an administrator from the building with the largest population of students who have the most complex challenges as they are navigating adolescence. In addition, as a coach at the high school, I see the time that administrators spend outside of school hours to help monitor sporting events, a responsibility that administrators at the primary and elementary schools frankly do not have. Further, some of these administrators are current and future coaches for the school, beloved by students and athletes, whose coaching roles would very likely be lost should they no longer be employed here. Administrators' jobs have become very complex, given societal changes, and they are an integral part of supporting teachers to create a safe and effective learning environment. To cut a school of around eight hundred students down to three administrators while leaving smaller schools with less complex problems fully staffed would harm both the students and teachers at L M H S. Should this committee not be swayed and the L M H S position not be able to be saved, I hope that you at least inform the person on the chopping block so the entirety of L M H S administrative staff is not living in a constant state of anxiety. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Want to go to Zoom, Ms. Brushen?
Hi, thank you so much, Laura Brushen, three eighty nine Wolfus Road. I'm here to just advocate for the fifth grade music program cuts, salary cuts. The cut to the program is just gonna be devastating on our program and the kids that are coming up. That fifth grade program is bigger than it's been in the recent past, I think, five years now. It's twenty percent bigger than it was last year, even though the whole fifth grade class is twenty percent smaller than it has been in prior years. That fifth grade program feeds directly into the middle and high school band program, which the kiddos have held together, the music program and the marching band program have worked incredibly hard. Multiple studies are done, have been done, and I'm happy to share information about the impact that music has on kids as low as young as four years old in their interpersonal skills, their leadership skills, their math. It impacts all their academic curriculum as well. It just really is something for very short-sighted, very small amounts of money to keep our fifth grade program able to participate in other benefits. It's just, it's a small amount. I know you're wrestling with, you know, a very large gap between spending and the budget. And I know it needs to come from somewhere, but I just, I really ask that you take a hard look at some of the smaller dollar things, should any, I know that your free cash was being used at the other meetings, if something does become available. I really ask that you look at which programs are being maybe inequitably harmed, where a small cut to a, you know, a large cut to a small program or a decimal point with someone's time makes a difference, not only for their benefits, but also for the kids that they're servicing. So I just ask that you please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the public? Seeing that, we'll take public comment from the committee. Ms. Bozowski?
Hey, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi. So I wanted to say that I've been really uncomfortable since our meeting with the select board because the decision to wait a year for the override's not been sitting really well with me. As we've continued to closely examine the cuts, it's been more and more painful and I've been getting more and more uncomfortable. The reasons to make sense, the reasons to wait makes sense from a holistic and a strategic view. And I think they still make sense. The reasons are still there. I see the reasons the town manager and the select board said there's no way they can get the override numbers together for a holistic override this year and that we had to wait another year because of the changing staffing situation and there wasn't work done this year towards one. I'm frustrated. I understand the reasons why. But I wanted to say that the reason, the thing I haven't stopped thinking about since our meeting with the select board is that we weren't elected to represent the interests of the wider town for those reasons. We're the school committee and our job, our duty is to fight for the students and what the students need. So I'm not sure we're doing that duty if we wait a year for the override. Some of my motivation was to hold out for the free cash, but I keep watching. That money isn't guaranteed. I keep watching. It seems like that amount is going down. There was discussion about putting money into paving. They didn't want to reduce the amount of money going to paving. While I'm sitting watching going, okay, but we're laying off ten percent of staff. This is incredibly painful for this department. And I said it last week and I'm gonna say it again and I'm gonna keep saying it. These are the kids that have lived through COVID. They've not had a normal childhood. They've already had to go through so much. Why are we ever insisting on continuously making things harder for our kids? Why can't we give them the basics of a quality education? So these cuts are untenable. The expense lines are decimated, almost ten percent of our positions, ten percent. I just can't understand why we are choosing to do this to our students. I have faith in the staff and our teachers. I think we can make it.
You didn't put your picture up here?
I think we can make it work for a rough year, but I can't understand why we're doing it when we have an option. I'm having a really hard time sitting with that. So we're looking at cutting almost ten percent of our staff. And I want people who don't have kids to understand what an entire year of a child's life is developmentally, how much they grow and change, how much teachers are trying to cram into their heads in a single year. And I don't think that people who don't have kids are understanding that just waiting here means a kid in first grade is missing out on the basic building blocks of knowledge and it means a kid in high school is maybe not getting to take a class they need before graduation when they lose us forever. And it means students missing out on the supports they need to reach their full potentials as humans, as adults, which is our end goal. So last night at the select board meeting, they did discuss going for a townwide override. Now, now that there's a citizen's petition for a school ride override, a school-only override, which I'm confused by because I don't understand why the numbers, the information necessary, the numbers weren't there for a larger override. But now that there is the threat of a school's only override, it is possible. I don't understand why the urgency is now there, whereas before we were, back then, we were still cutting ten percent of staff and looking at class sizes of potentially thirty kids and facing these devastating cuts and it wasn't met with this urgency. So I just wanted to say I am grateful there is a citizen override on the ballot. I'm grateful there's hopefully going to be an option to vote for it and I'm gonna fight like hell for it.
Thank you. Mr. Beardmore?
Evening. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. So I can, I share most of the concerns, all of the concerns that Laura spoke of. However, my position on the override has not changed. As I said, I think that we need to go for a townwide, a well-considered and well-vetted townwide override next year. That being said, if a school override lands on the town being warrant and the battle this year, I absolutely will support it, go for it and help it to whatever needs that I am able. I spoke with the chair of the select board earlier today and I am very concerned that the plan seems to be in flux as a result of the citizen's petition. I'm concerned that new numbers are going to be brought from the town that have not been vetted to any extent like the numbers and the discussions have in the school department over the course of the last several months and years, for that matter. And I am very concerned that this may end up being a poison pill. I don't know that that is the intent, but it could certainly be, it certainly may be the intent and it could certainly be the effect. So I just want to voice that concern, but certainly for all the reasons that Laura stated, if this does, I think it's guaranteed to be on the warrant because it's a citizen's petition, but if it does make its way to the ballot, I think you intend to just. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Arshinbo?
I'm going to go in a slightly different direction and say that I'm planning on attending the March twenty fourth meeting with the Ways and Means Committee in Amherst. And if anyone has letters or concerns about our budget, this is the time to do it. I have reached out to our three legislators and heard from three legislators stating that they are going to push what they can to get additional funding for our schools in this legislative session. I've also reached out to the chairperson of the Education Committee in the Senate as well as in the House, and I suggest everybody do that. The more letters that these people get, the more they will pay attention to what we need. I have never been to a hearing like this before, so I'm quite curious about it, but I'm very happy to go and I will bring my thoughts. I have no idea if I will have a chance to voice them or share them or whatever, but I will bring our thoughts that we're getting crushed here and that the state needs to do something about it.
Thank you. Ms. Skull and Brady, did you have a public comment?
No.
Mr. Bowen, we still are in public comment if you have a public comment.
This is John Bowen, Jr., actually. So I gave this speech to the select board last night, but I wanted to give it here too. John Bowen, Jr., one fifty-two Highland Street. I am speaking tonight about Lunenburg schools. I recently moved here to Lunenburg with my dad, John Bowen, in January of last year because I was in a bad environment, which caused me a lot of difficulties in my life, mentally, emotionally, socially and academically. Every school I attended, which was three last year alone and seven schools over five years, was a real challenge. I had no support from people I was living with and I was abused, not physically, but mentally, and was told my father didn't love me. I did not know that my father was in a bitter legal fight for more than ten years. All of this was before I came to Lunenburg to live with my dad. In my previous living situation, I was told I should know what to do with homework assignments and with regular life skills. This was my whole life and I felt trapped. Whenever I got upset because I was frustrated with understanding everything, my mother would force me to four hospitals between the ages of nine and fifteen, all the time telling me I am the problem and I am no different than my father, which characterized someone negatively to me and my sister daily. However, I am speaking with you today because of my father and because of Lunenburg High School. I never thought I could do this a year ago. Why am I sharing this with you? As my father has shown me, having one voice and one vote is important, that I should always speak up. This is how I heal from my traumatic path. I am who I am today by speaking up and speaking out. I want you to know that because of the people here in Lunenburg, my dad, of course, my stepmom, Jean Marie Price, Anne from school, Joshua Coljel, Julianne Anscombe, Lori Shea, James McQueeney, Cole Childler, Jennifer Miller, Stacy Cantfield and Timothy Santry and all of my other teachers and mentors and friends at Lunenburg High School, including Mr. and Mrs. Everhart, Mrs. Foyle and Mrs. Muller and company, and all of my friends at Float Club and the entire class of two thousand and twenty-seven for voting me to ride the float with Kendra Everhart at homecoming. This was a great honor. There are so many others I want to name, just not enough time. All of these people have helped this person, me, who stands before you today, who has had an I D P. his whole life and today I do not have any special needs requirements because of a, because of a good plan that Lunenburg High School formulated for me working with my father. Since coming to Lunenburg High, my first semester here, I made honors. My second semester here, I made high honors. In this past semester, I made special honors and it appears I am keeping the ship steady. This is because of the program that Lunenburg High School has for kids with special needs, including kids like me who come from difficult homes or abusive homes. I have excelled because of the special needs assistance and the professionalism of how Lunenburg High School worked with my father and with me. They helped me make my life better academically and socially. I have failed every grade since seventh grade and I have just passed along to my other schools before that as well. I thought no one cared, however, not today. Today I have a direction. I am planning on law school and then the Marine Corps. I also intend to run for president of the class of two thousand and twenty-seven at Lunenburg High School and I will be looking for signatures.
Thank you, John.
I'm sorry, that wasn't. What I'm really here today to say to you is you have difficult decisions to make about the schools, but the one thing you should support one hundred percent is the special services needed for all the kids in Lunenburg schools. I play sports and I love sports, but if you cut that, I am okay with it happening. Or if you have to charge fees for us to have sports, that's okay with me too. As well as any other extra after-school activities offered by the school, I am okay with that being cut or charged to fee. In closing, I just want to be heard that cutting any program or assistance for people with educational and social difficulties may be some of my situation, that of an abusive home life with no support. As a survivor myself, I know there are many out there and you cannot have them sit through the cracks. There are a lot of us. I am not the only one. I ask that if you've got anything from the school, if you've not got special needs education or the professionals attached to this education from Lunenburg schools, this is like removing life support from a patient who can live with some sort of rehabilitation assistance, just not in the moment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. All right, any other public comment?
I just want to say that was an amazing speech. That was really good.
Can I just?
Yes, Laura.
Sorry, Brian.
Go ahead.
For Carol's, for Carol's comment about the writing letters to our elected officials, they should have your address, like your full name and the address where you're registered to vote at the bottom of them. That's more helpful for them to make it official.
Yes, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the chair's report. I have a couple of things. Tonight, in seven minutes, the select board is meeting at the Town Hall in the Balada Meeting Room. They are discussing the F Y. two thousand and twenty-five budget, F Y. two thousand and twenty-six budget, capital plan and annual town meeting warrant articles. They will likely be discussing an override or override articles. So if you're interested in that, that is in seven minutes over at the Town Hall. Also, there was news for the State House News Service this morning that two weeks before the policies are set to expire, the House Democrats moved Monday to temporarily extend pandemic-era laws, allowing public meetings to offer remote access. The House Ways and Means Committee began advancing a bill that would keep in place language granting public bodies flexibility to hold meetings virtually or in hybrid formats, as well as measures lowering the number of people necessary for a quorum at town meeting and allowing representative town meetings to be held with remote participation. Those COVID-era policies are set to expire March thirty first and the House bill would push that sunset date until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. There was a citizen's petition for an override that was submitted by T. J. Loughlin, signed by many citizens, the language of the warrant article, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate two million ninety-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars to supplement the Lunenburg Public Schools budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, contingent upon the passage of a proposition, two and a half ballot question, or take any other action relative thereto. The, the number was calculated by the difference between the level service budget of the schools, which was twenty-seven million eight hundred and eighty-six thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars, and the town manager budget of twenty-five million seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars. Additionally, the Joint Committee on Ways and Means Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-six Public Budget Hearing is on Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. The hearing begins at eleven A M. at the State House. You can join educators and public education supporters from across the Commonwealth as they advocate for the F Y. two thousand and twenty-six funding for schools, colleges and universities. And the MTA is also organizing this, but they are looking for written testimony and we'll be talking about that later today, too. That was all I had. I don't believe we have a student representative. Next on the agenda is review and approve minutes. I don't believe we have any minutes. Next item on the agenda is to review and approve line item transfers, warrants and donations. Do we have some line item transfers today? The warrants for March third, two thousand and twenty-five to March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five totaled one hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and eleven dollars and forty-one cents.
We also have a donation in the amount of one hundred and five dollars from a Lunenburg family. This donation is for the Turkey Hill Elementary School Music Department and the monies would be deposited into the gift account. Relative to line item transfers, I'm not sure if the committee wants to defer that vote on line item transfers until there's an opportunity to ask questions about the F Y. twenty-five quarterly budget report, because those are line item transfers, we connect to that.
Okay, so do you want to table that?
Until we get to, until we get to that, that would make more sense to talk about it all at once.
Yeah, if there's no objection, we can table that until the appropriate time we have that information. But I would look for a motion to accept the donation.
I would make a motion to accept the donation with our gratitude to the Turkey Hill Music Program.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mrs. Bozowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Arshinbo?
Yes.
Mr. Skull and Brady?
Yes.
And Mr. Layton?
Yes, thank you. So is that it for our line item transfers then? We'll wait?
I think we can wait.
Okay.
It's connected to the lines in the budget report.
All right, so we'll continue on then. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
And this will be brief this evening. Relative to registration, it is that time of year approaching. Just a reminder for everyone that the pre-K registration is currently open and closes March twenty-eighth. Information is posted on the district website. Coming soon, summer extended day registration will open April twenty-eighth. The before and after school extended day program for the school year two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six will open May fifth and the early learning center registration for school year two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six will open on May nineteenth. Next school committee meeting is April second. That's at six thirty from Town Hall. We've been advised by the town manager that until something definitive is actually signed relative to the change with the open meeting, we'll add that anything posted in the meantime, we would have to tell people who should be in person. Should that change, we'll resume our normal hybrid situation. The next meeting for the school committee after April second would be April sixteenth, also at six thirty, again from the middle high school. And just a reminder that March twenty-eighth is an early release day for professional development for staff.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent on her report from the committee?
Where are we on, oh, my gosh, I can't remember where. The facilities person?
We have hired the facilities director. They will be starting on April second, so hopefully we'll be able to coordinate attendance virtually or in person for a.
That's great news.
Absolutely fantastic. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, next item on the agenda is presentation. We do not have a presentation tonight. Next item on the agenda is new business. We have an action item, F Y. two thousand and twenty-six extended day and E L C. handbooks.
So you have the copies of those handbooks. Essentially, really, the only change to the handbooks is relative to dates to update them for next year and the location change. Substantively, there's, there's really no change to the handbooks.
What questions do the committee members have?
I would just ask that, Dr. Burnham, can you explain the location change for the people that may not know?
Sure. So we had talked about this actually a year ago when we were looking to save money for the bus cost with a tight budget for F Y. twenty-five. The plan is that Early Learning Center will be located at the primary school and the before-school extended day program will be housed at the Turkey Hill in the morning. So. So for all students K5 in the extended day drop-off would be in the morning at Turkey Hill Elementary. Um, as the school day is about to start and the buses roll up to the curb to drop kids off to start their day at Turkey Hill, that's when students in extended day, that are primary school age students, would hop on the bus, and then the bus would then proceed to the primary school where all of those kiddos would get off for the school day. The reverse will be true in the afternoon. The afternoon extended day location will be at the primary school. So the way that will work is in the afternoon, when the buses roll up at dismissal to, um, have the Turkey Hill students board, the students then proceed down to the primary school. Any Turkey Hill students who are attending the extended day after-school program would get off the bus when they got to the primary school. Then the students from the primary heading home would board the buses and the buses would, um, depart. All students will be at the primary school for the program in the afternoon, grades K through 5. So essentially, we're gonna be housed back in the schools, but there still will be one location, which is good for parents. They don't have to drop off in the morning at Turkey Hill and then scoot down to the primary and drop off primary school age students. There's just one drop-off, and on the afternoon side, just one pickup location for parents, and we only have to staff one location, which as you know, we, we have trouble with staff for that program. Um, so that's the plan. Again, Early Learning Center occurs during the daytime. They will be housed in a classroom down at the primary school all of next year.
Thank you.
So follow-up to that, how was that being communicated to the parents?
So that will be communicated in part through this, um, handbook, but additionally, um, it will be included in the registration forms that people will have to fill out to register for either Early Learning Center or the before-after-school program. Um, additionally, there will be messages that go out through the program to all of the current families in the program, so that they're well aware. And, um, just another, uh, mention, the summer program, uh, this summer will be located, um, we were planning to do it down at the primary school because there is some air conditioning available at the primary school. Although, we may want to reconsider that as well because they'll be working on installing additional, which when we made that decision, that was not the situation. So if there's any change to the summer location, I'll get back to the committee, but it will be part of the information that's on the registration forms and communications will be going out through the program department or so.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on the FY 26 Extended Day and ELC Handbooks? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to accept the, uh, ELC handbooks and the extended day information as discussed.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All right, we'll look for a roll call vote then.
Okay, Mrs. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenbo?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrady?
Yes.
And Mr. Layton?
Yes, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is action item on grants.
Um, so you also have some information about some new grants that we would like to pursue. Uh, Dr. Bukis is also on the call in case anybody has any questions. Uh, Dr. Bukis, you want to give a quick overview of, of the grants that we're looking to pursue?
Sure. And this first one is, um, the Invention Land Grant, and that is, um, considered a stackable grant, um, which means that they would support a portion of the redesign of the STEM labs as well as some materials that were cut from the budget so we can fully stock the STEM labs. Um, they would then write a letter of support for two other grants that we will then, um, apply for to complement their grant. Um, so the first step and the deadline is the end of this March, um, is to apply for this grant, and then we would go forward and apply for the other two grants.
Any questions or comments from the committee members?
Are there additional costs to us?
We would not go forward if there were any additional costs for us. So we would make sure that the two grants together would cover the redesign of the rooms, any of the furniture, any area of the equipment, um, going forward. So that's why we would, um, apply for the other two grants, um, hoping that one of them would cover the, the cost. And, um, after talking with representatives from Invention Land Education, um, they are very confident. They have written many letters of support for the other grants, um, to be able to collaborate with other agencies, um, in supporting STEM learning.
Good. Yeah.
I would just, uh, thank, uh, Dr. Burnham and, um, Dr. Bukis and, and the whole administration team for, again, looking for grants and, and trying to find grants that fit, uh, Luenberg Public Schools. So thank you. If there's no other comments, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, authorize the pursuit of the Invention Land Grant as described.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, we're ready.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenbo?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrady?
Yes.
And Mr. Layton?
Yes, thank you. Next item. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is old business action item FY 25 Quarterly Budget Report.
Okay, so you have an updated report in your folder. Um, I'd invite, um, Dr. Gilson, uh, up to the microphone to give you a quick overview. I think it's, um, I think it's pretty straightforward. Anything that's in a deficit is highlighted for you in yellow, and we're looking to address much of that with, uh, line item transfers this evening.
So specifically, uh, I'm going to talk about the contracted service line. Um, this was mentioned that we were in process to receive E-rate reimbursement. The E-rate reimbursement has finally been applied in February, um, but I'm told that this is not immediately reflected in munis as a credit. So progressively, we will receive reimbursement, but we are not going to deficit in that line item. So be reassured of that. Now, if you look also to, there are multiple substitute lines, um, that are going in the, uh, in the negative. And so one of the line item transfers deals with those substitute lines, and basically we're requesting to transfer funds from, there are multiple substitute lines, the regular substitutes, long-term substitutes, and some are more frequently tapped than others. So we would be, uh, going to be using funds from, um, primary school, special education, long-term, uh, substitute lines, elementary school sub- substitute lines, and we're going to be using a high school paraprofessional line, um, for someone that resigned and the position has remained unfilled. So we're going to use a partial amount of that line, um, a middle, middle school secretary overtime that has not been used, and the, there is an amount remaining in an English high school textbook line, uh, $3,392. So we're going to use that to address all of the substitute lines. Um, there are, um, a couple of salary lines, um, middle school speech pathologist, and that person is, happens to be split between three buildings, uh, with different percentages. And then we have a very talented central office staff with another challenge with people split between multiple roles. So we've been working with Nancy Owork, um, and we're, uh, realigning their payroll and their allocations along with the percentages. So, um, and then we're going to do a historical correction. Contracted services, again, um, this is, uh, what, um, the 1374, '76, we're using some of the amount from the high school supply line to put this back into a zero balance. And, um, that was explained in the, in the report, too, that I provided. Uh, custodia, custodial supplies, basically what the custodial supplies transfer form is for is it's collecting all unused supplies, um, that are found throughout the budget at this point in the year, and we're using that to buy things like toilet paper and, um, cleaning supplies, you know, so we're trying to replenish, we're recycling these supply lines to get it more money to take us to the end of the year with custodial supplies. Uh, we're watching the special ed transportation line. Uh, it's just starting to go negative, and negative in terms of its, uh, negative forty-two cent, uh, forty-two dollars and thirty-three cents, and that's really due to changing situations. We have some McKinney-Vento situations, um, and we're going to evaluate before making a line item transfer. We don't want to keep making line item transfers. We're going to try to at least anticipate what we might need for the remainder of the year. With special education, oh, homeless, it's homeless.
Okay, got it.
Don't, don't worry about interrupting and asking. I'm happy to tell you, because if you have a question, chances are somebody else does, too.
Probably not. Everybody else knows.
No, I don't know. But, um, but anyway, so, um, with special ed, there's, this, the special ed contracted evaluations needs more money in it. It's not in deficit yet. Um, we have been, um, looking at ways to, um, address, we have a $12,000, uh, $12,000 in, uh, need for contracted evaluations. We're taking that from the special ed, uh, sped supply lines along with home hospital tutoring lines to get at the amount that we need for those contracted services. And the last two, um, on my list are being taken care of. Um, course reimbursements are being realigned at the town accountant level, um, as part of system professional development expenses, and it's already in process, but it just hasn't shown up in munis yet. And then, um, high school after, uh, high school after-school advisors, typically they're funded from the revolving accounts and not the local budget, so we're going to be taking care of that. Okay?
Any questions?
Hey, did we want to review the line item transfers?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We can also accept the report, too.
Right.
A couple of action items.
So, do you want me to go along through each transfer, or do you have, do you feel like I've talked about that?
Yeah, I think it would be good for the public to go through each one.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay, so, um, let's see. So the, uh, first transfer is related to the substitute lines, which I talked about, and we're just basically moving, since there are multiple substitute lines, we're basically, um, consolidating those substitute lines and applying, um, a high school paraprofessional line and the excess from English textbooks that wasn't used and along with the middle school overtime, um, secretarial line. Custodial supplies, basically, we're collecting at this point all unused, uh, funding from all of the supply lines in the total budget and using those to collect enough money to recycle and buy toilet paper and paper towels and cleaning supplies for the high school, middle school, primary school, and elementary school. There is another transfer for contracted services, and we're moving, um, from, uh, an amount of $1,374.76 to, uh, target the deficit in the contracted service line at the high school level. And, let's see, um, the other, um, contr- basically, uh, that's the special ed evaluations that I spoke of, and we're taking the special ed education, uh, evaluations, the, uh, need is $12,000.10, and so we are using special education general supplies, ACE program general supplies, L program general supplies, and the home hospital tutoring account to fund the, the need for special ed contracted evaluations. Okay?
Questions that committee members have?
I, I just have one question, if I could.
Yes.
Um, and that is, you're anticipating, I don't even remember which account it was, it's negative forty-two, um, dollars.
Yes.
You're anticipating.
With this, for the transportation.
For transportation.
Yes.
And you, you definitely have an idea as to where the additional money would come from when it is needed to be transferred?
I have an idea right now, but I need to know how, like, we're gonna need to do a little bit of projecting out, and, and things do change every day, like, um, you know, we, if you have a situation where people lose their home because of a fire, um, then we have to transport them.
Sure.
If you have somebody that moves in, we have to provide special education transport if they need it. So we're gonna evaluate that and then make some decisions, but I have some ideas.
Okay. I was just concerned when you said we're taking all the supplies we haven't spent.
Yes.
And we're adding them all up together to buy custodial supplies, and then I was just thinking, well, where are you getting this other money from?
Right, no, that's a, that's a gist of it. We continue to look at the entire budget, and I have certain ones that I'm not, um, spending right now, just yet.
Okay.
So I'm holding back on those.
Thank you.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I did have a question, and it might be for Dr. Burnham, too, or your staff, but the special ed contracted evaluations line, um, the starting balance was 5,000. We're transferring an additional close to 10, 11,000. So is this a pattern? Or is this a concern that we're gonna need this to be a larger item in the future? Or is this kind of a fluke year that we're gonna need this?
Hard to say.
I would say, based on past, this is a fluke year. Whether or not this pattern holds, um, remains to be seen.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't we redo the IEP this past year? Would that lead to the increased cost? And they are way more complicated.
No, I don't, I don't think it's connected to the, the new version of the IEP.
Yeah, it's connected to, like, the, the, the incoming needs of students. We've had some students that were unexpected. Um, we had had a need for bilingual, um, interpreters to deliver these evaluations.
Yep, and Mrs. Hans comes on, she can, she can speak to that. Go ahead, Juliana.
All right, I was hard to find the raised my hand feature, and I, I still can't. So, so this, this line is one that can fluctuate greatly from year to year. It really depends on, any parent has the opportunity, um, if they don't necessarily agree with our evaluations, when, when a student goes through their initial evaluation cycle or reevaluation cycle, they have the ability to, to ask for an independent educational evaluation. Some years, we don't have any. Other years, such as this year, we've had a couple that have come up where parents have asked to have an outside doctor look at, um, the testing that we've done. And, um, and I, there's a whole process for that, so I do vet that according to the regs. And that, and then the other, the other thing that we've had this year is we have had some students who have had, um, additional needs outside of the scope of what our staff can do evaluations on. Um, so, so that's, that's accounted. It's really been a fluke year. It, it hasn't been this high in years. Tony, I don't think it really has anything to do with the new IEP process at all. Um, I think it just has to do, almost like a perfect storm, right, of just certain things that have come together this year. Um, so I, I don't necessarily see it as us needing to increase that line item dramatically next year. However, as what I always do, I track our yearly costs, and if I see over the course of a couple of years that it is trending up, I will come back, um, with, with that as forecast for the, for the next year.
Thank you. Mr. Beardmore?
Uh, I just want to, want to double click into a, a couple of these things, um, since Juliana has her camera still turned on. I mean, just, I, 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 I think you just, you just suggested that the coming year's budget, and I do not have a side by, I remotely right now, so I'm not, I'm not making a side by side of our spending versus our projected, uh, spending in the, in the next year's budget, is any of that increase captured in the FY 26 budget?
For independent evaluations?
Yes, specifically.
How would you do that? To see what the budget would be budgeted for, how would we know what that's gonna be? We don't, we don't know what the budget, what we budgeted.
We are forecasting, though, the same for last year as, this year as for next year, but it's $5,000.
Thank you.
Um, but in the past, I will say that we, I mean, there was one year FY '24, it was $6,000 we. But in the past, I will say that we, I mean, there was one year FY twenty-four, it was six thousand dollars we spent. And then FY twenty-three, we spent zero. And then the year before that, it was thirty-six fifty. So, it's really.
It's variable.
It's a moving target.
Okay.
Just.
I, I want, I want to go back to the, to the custodial supplies. And I apologize, my audio cut out a little bit during the budget report. It strikes me that fifteen thousand dollars for paper towels and such seems like a lot. And I'm wondering, are we, how does, how does this ending trend from last year to this year? And again, how are we projecting relative to that?
Well, that's a very interesting question because we have projected a certain amount. However, in talking to like the head custodian here, she indicated that the custodial supplies were, like, she believed they were very different in terms of the usage of everything this year. I don't know why, the reason for that. We've projected in talking, we, we actually, to get at our projection number for next year, I talked with the rep at our custodial supply company. We ran a list of all the supplies that we bought because the school purchases, the school district purchases with every school through Hilliard Supplies. And we ran a whole list of everything that was purchased last year and this past year. And I asked what the increase should be. And so, we increased that amount by five percent over last year. And that's the number that we got. So, I have spent all the custodial supply money that was budgeted for this year. And we have about five thousand dollars from the individual schools right now to cover the expenses. And then I'm trying to project to cover us through the end of this year.
So, I, and I, I understand this is probably one of those things that's really good, but if you're.
Yeah, it is.
I'm just concerned that we'll be sitting here a year from now, and that fifteen thousand dollars will be twenty or twenty-five. What I'm, what, what I suspect, and this is going to be hard to know because we don't have our senior custodian, you know, we've changed senior custodians.
Yes.
And we don't have a, we don't have our same, you know, facilities director. I suspect that we may have stockpiled in FY twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four.
That's possible.
And, and, you know, maybe use some, some COVID-related funds over those years.
Yes.
And those stockpiles, you know, as we bought for each additional year rolled over, but they dwindled over time. And, and now we are going to be in a, in a situation where, like everything else, the cost of paper towels has increased just like, you know, eggs. And, and I'm concerned that we maybe, we may have first hit a problem for next year. It's just, I'd like a little bit more on, put it in a particular area. Because you can't, we can't cut toilet paper.
Yes, Peter, that's definite. You just can't.
I, I would also suggest that we stock the bathrooms at TCP as well. And the building has had heavy use this year. They've had rec program classrooms running in addition to the gym. There's always a lot of activity down at the food pantry. So.
And we're out of that business next year, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. We won't be stocking that building, so.
Have we warned them that that's going to be an expense that they're, I guess the town or someone else is going to be incurring? I just don't want someone else to be caught unaware.
I don't know.
Especially in the toilet paper department.
I warned them about that, but I could warn them about that.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Want to communicate that.
Right.
In thinking about this, it's the facilities director for the town who has oversight of the building. And the rec department falls under facilities. It doesn't fall under parks. So, he's aware of all the things that are going on through the rec department there. So, I, I suspect that he is already aware, but I can certainly have a conversation as well. Because there are other things that will not be at TCP once we vacate the building. So, we need to be sure that they're, they're ready for all of that too.
Yep. But like if the food pantry is going to suddenly not have the bathrooms stocked, I would want them to be aware that that might happen. Or that might be an expense that might be happening.
Yes. And then. Our plan, yeah, our plan is we've had, having a, a closeout meeting with Chris Ruth to transition. We just haven't had that yet. So, that's in our plan.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Then I'll look for a motion on the line item transfers as well as the quarterly budget report.
Do you want to do them as two or one?
Doesn't matter to me.
I'll make a motion to do, to accept the quarterly budget report and approve the line item transfers.
I will second.
Any discussion? All right, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Mrs. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Beadmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Skolbrini?
Yes.
And Mr. Leaden.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Next is an action item on the unaffiliated salary schedule FY twenty-six to twenty-eight.
So, a couple of meetings ago, I, I brought in a draft. What you've got are, is a proposal for a four percent increase for the unaffiliated salary schedule for next year. And then two and a half and a two and a half in the two years that follow. The, the bigger increase for next year is just sort of keeping in line with where other groups that have an hourly pay rate have been settling in district. And I didn't want to extend too much beyond the first year. Because that would, again, this is largely the staff of the extended day in the early learning center program. Which is, they're fully paid out of revolving. So, it's not that there's a budgetary impact here. But there may, we may need to take a closer look another year out to see whether or not the revolving can sustain any increases beyond this without having to increase the rates for the program.
Can I, can I ask some questions?
Sure.
Yes.
What is red circled?
Yep. So, we had that question from Mr. Beagor the last time as well.
Oh, dang.
We're, we're trying to research that to figure out what that is, and it still is a mystery at this point. But I, I do know that, and I do believe Ms. Peterson is also on the call tonight, that, that was something that Mr. Cassidy put in. And we, we can't, we're having trouble tracking down what that was in reference to.
That's correct. That's correct. Mr. Cassidy, I know because I remember that. And I'm trying to look in his past historical files to find out what the red circle notation means. If I find that, I certainly will pass that on.
We've, we've been a little busy gathering other information the last couple of weeks. So, searching through Mr. Cassidy's historic records has taken a little bit of a backseat to public records requests and things like that, so.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the unaffiliated salary schedule as presented.
A second.
Any discussion? All right, ready for a roll call vote?
Mrs. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Beadmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Skolbrini?
Yes.
And Mr. Leaden.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is the FY twenty-six school calendar.
I'm not sure if the committee would like to take the parent-teacher conference pilot out of order because it's connected to the school calendar vote. The.
If there's no objection, we will take the discussion, parent-teacher conference pilot, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five report out of order.
Okay. So, you have a little summary that the teachers at the middle high school worked with Mr. Santry. They, they did not propose a pilot for parent-teacher conferences this school year. This year, the primary school in Turkey Hill did a pilot. They, they approached parent-teacher conferences differently. But this year, the teachers worked with Mr. Santry to propose a different parent-teacher conference model for next year that they would like to try out. Essentially, they're taking the hours of parent-teacher conference time that's contractual. And they're spreading it out. They would like to have three two-hour blocks over the course of the year. Though, the nice thing about having three, you can get a couple in, in the earlier side of the year, but you still have one that you can do in the second half of the year. And there are several courses that are semesterized courses. So, teachers would have those, those students in those rooms in the early part of the year. So, having an opportunity for parent-teacher conferences later in the year is actually beneficial. So, that's, that's the model they would like to try out. And they gave us dates, which would be on the final draft of the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar.
I just had a question. It's indicating just the high school. Is that correct? This says the high school.
I believe that Mr. Santry is on this call, and I believe that.
That's what I'm seeing.
Here's Mr. Santry.
Good evening. Mrs. Ashenbaum, you are correct. The three two-hour sessions are for the high school because that's more appropriate for the high school because of the semester two classes. So, we can get more parents into the building. It actually ties in nicely with our school improvement plan around family and community engagement. So, we're going to be tracking those numbers of parents. It wouldn't be appropriate for the middle school to have that January meeting. So, actually, they relinquished a few things and they are going to continue to offer hybrid and in-person meetings for two meetings for three hours.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Skolbrini?
I, I have never done, I've only ever done from the, the parent's side. Do teachers like it when it's done this way? I, I don't even know.
We don't know.
Do teachers hate parent-teacher conferences?
I don't know that they hate them.
Not always.
I think the challenge with parent-teacher conferences are.
Yeah, you have to come up to that.
That would always wanted to try this.
Okay.
Would always wanted to see if it would be successful. So, as in, you know, working together with the teachers and it tying nicely with school improvement plan, we figured we'd get it at world and we would provide you some data for whether it was successful.
So, this committee also included LEA reps. Mr. Santry?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is, is the idea that parents would only do one of these conferences and they decide if they wanted one earlier in the year or one in semester two?
It's the idea that semest, uh, parents who had students taking a semester two course didn't have the opportunity to meet their teachers because the parent-teacher conferences had already announced. So, if you have a class that's starting in January and the parent-teacher conferences are in October, you don't have the opportunity to meet the teacher in that semester two course. So, if we have a parent-teacher conference in March, those students that are signed up for classes in the semester two would be able to meet their teachers.
Okay. So, they could do semester one and semester two and meet the teachers for both semesters?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Beadmore?
Yeah, I have a few questions and comments on this. First, I appreciate the, the creative thinking on this. I think that, you know, while our, our teachers are available to meet the parents early, anytime during the year, I think organizing parent-teacher conferences to accommodate half-year classes that begin in January, it makes, makes good sense. What I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about two things. The first is a minor concern because the, the earlier question, the one about the LEA reps. I'm assuming that this is within the needs and bounds of our collective party agreement. The letter didn't specifically state that, but assuming that's the case.
The great thing about this pilot is that it was hand-in-hand with the LEA reps and with the teachers step-by-step in producing this. So, yes, it fits all of the criteria of contractual obligations.
Okay. The, what, what's coming away, while we're adding something, we're also taking away something. By my calculus, we're taking away two hours of parent-teacher conference time in the first semester. And, and my, my concern is, is that most of, at least my kids' classes in the high school have been full-year classes. And frequently, particularly if you're like me and you're not there on the minute that you can register for parent-teacher conferences, these blocks fill up or your, your available times are limited. And it creates a little bit of a scheduling hassle for the parents. And, and my, my assumption here is that that is going to further limit those possibilities and create a situation where there aren't available times within that, within those two two-hour blocks that are going to occur in the fall. And, and I understand on the trade-off year, I'm just, I'm, I'm a little hesitant because of that. And I'm curious if that was discussed and if there was any analysis done around that, that, the test issue.
So, these were all challenges that were discussed by our group and talked about at faculty meetings and in that group. And I think that, you know, if we want change, we want to try something out of the box, we're going to have to give it a whirl. So, yep, there are probably going to be two less hours in October. Hopefully, we're going to be able to give you some data through a pilot on whether we felt this was successful or unsuccessful. We, we did feel as a group that it was extremely important to offer parents the opportunity to meet their teachers, their, their students' teachers for that semester course.
So, with that, with that trade-off in mind, and, and part of the challenge here is that it, it doesn't seem to have been parent representation in that, in that discussion. And the advisory committee, so far as I'm aware, has not been to discuss this. I, I'm concerned, I, I continue to be concerned about that issue. The other issue that I'm concerned about is, you know, for the, for the vast majority of our classes that are, that are full-year classes, I believe that's still the case. Do we expect that we're going to have a level of subscribership, you know, for those teachers who are teaching those classes, right? Or are we going to be in a situation where teachers who are teaching a lot of second-half classes are overwhelmed? But the teachers who are not teaching second-half classes or teaching full-year classes are going to be twiddling their thumbs for two hours in the evening in March?
All of these are valid concerns, Mr. Beadmore. And I, I want to correct you, though. I do believe that these were brought in front of both school advisory councils. I'll go through the notes and the agendas, but I do believe that we've had discussions on parent-teacher conferences.
Not recently, to my memory, but, okay. All right, fair enough.
One other thought that I would just throw out there is that parents can request a meeting with the, with their child's teacher at, at any, any time in the school year. So, I, I would say that if, if parents felt that they didn't have enough time or couldn't get slated in for a parent-teacher conference early enough in the year, they could absolutely reach out directly to any of the teachers that they wanted to be able to have a meeting with. And that request should be accommodated. So, hopefully, that alleviates a little bit of. And that request should be accommodated, so um hopefully that alleviates a little bit of concern.
Any other discussion from the committee?
My only thought would be that if the uh teachers work together to try and figure this out, then and it says they are proposing it and they will um take some feedback and and see how it goes, then I don't see any harm in giving it a try, especially since um if you wish to speak to a teacher, you have the right to do that. I hope people, if they are not successful scheduling that, reach out to administration. But um yeah, my experience is extremely long ago. But anytime I needed to speak to a teacher at the high school, I was always afforded that option. So um I I think they might as well give it a try. I think those second semester classes often don't get the um attention that the first semester classes do. And if your child is struggling in a full year course, this gives you a chance to talk to the teacher during the second semester. So I think we they should give it a try.
Yeah, I would agree. Uh I think it's good to try to improve the process um and not get stuck in in old ways. And I think they'll get feedback too, uh as it is a pilot. Uh it is a discussion item. We don't need any action tonight.
Right, and I, you know, the other two principals are also on the meeting this evening, Mr. Yvonne and Mrs. Squire. They piloted a different model this year and they um sought feedback from both the teachers and the families. Maybe they could hop on quickly and just um give you a quick overview of what kind of feedback they got relative to their pilots this year.
I gotta run, but I'll I'll see you guys later. Bye.
Thanks, Laura.
Hi, Kate.
Mrs. Squire.
So we did, we did the January pilot, which was overwhelmingly, parents loved it. They got valuable feedback. Teachers were split between the two buildings. The primary building was fifty fifty um between fall and the January conference time. And um Turkey Hill overwhelmingly, the teachers liked the January time. The responses we got from families was they got valuable input. They could get um the data. They knew where their child was and what if they needed help. There was more information than in November when we really are just getting to know children and you can't give parents the tools and your child struggling in this area that wasn't available in November, just the time of the conferences. So I believe we put forth, based on the data that we have, to move our conference times to January. With that said, if your child is struggling, teachers reach out all the time to families and we have families coming in to meet with teachers. They'll come in and meet with myself. So that's it's an open door policy. You don't have to wait to January. But the majority of parent teacher conferences will happen in January, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we imagine that the pilot at the high school will be similar. You know, we'll we'll get some feedback from both staff and parents and make a recommendation as to whether or not there's another modification of a pilot, if this is a model they wanna stick with, or if it's something that they wanna revert back to the previous law.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, we can go back to the action item on the FY twenty six school calendar. Mrs. Scolbry.
There was a day last year where somebody at the very end caught it and it was like a, do you remember this? Do you guys remember the day?
Every year, there's always.
There was some glitch.
Something on the calendar. Did you find something good?
No, no, I'm just wondering if what caused the one last year has been contemplated for this year. The kids got like an extra day off, so I'm asking.
I don't know. Once again, we had many, many, many eyes on these calendars over the last several months. They they were looked at by all of the school advisory councils in their first draft, um all of the building leadership teams. PTO got to look at it. Paccel got to look at it. Ms. Peterson, you can jump in if I'm forgetting any other groups that the union uh looked it over as well. So hopefully there are no, no mistakes. It's, what was the name of that magazine? Highlights? Where you had to find the mistake?
Yes.
That's a little bit uh like our version of this. We we challenged the community with it every year. Can you find the mistake?
Somebody finds like an ice cream cone in the clouds or something. I don't see anything. I don't see the the problem. Like last year, it was like we had one day too long in the summertime, but I don't see that. That's what I remember. So when is the final day of school? The tenth?
The tenth, if there's no snow.
Okay. Can I ask a a question related to the air conditioning? Have we ever thought about, like, I'm from Ohio. We never went to school before Labor Day, like, ever. Is there any possibility of doing that here?
So believe it or not, I don't usually have the challenge the first three days we're open. It's usually the first week in Feb- uh in September. Sometimes it's even a little bit later than that, and I also have them in June.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
They'll, my very first year here, it was the the opening week of school that was brutally hot.
Yeah.
But usually um that kind of flexes around a little bit, so you can't, it's not, it's not a guarantee that if we went back after Labor Day, we'd be free and clear. As a matter of fact, I'm bumping into later in June and I run the risk of warm days then too, so.
The other challenge we have there is the the state regulations around graduation and senior time and all that sort of thing. Which my preference would be to keep graduation officially in June.
I don't see any problems.
And I think we've gone in the past and changed the dates later on, so I'm not too worried.
I think it's fine. So is this a?
This is an action item.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the school calendar twenty twenty five, twenty six as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, ready. Ready for roll call?
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Archibald?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
And Mr. Layton?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. All right, next up is the athletic camp proposal.
So um the athletic director, Mr. Bigelow is here this evening. He can uh give you an overview of what he's thinking about for camps this summer.
Um I did update, I did update the uh the previous document that I had shared with the chair, uh Dr. Burnham, Dr. Gilson, I forget who else was on that, but um it was updated. Uh since we talked about this, I've been working on trying to recruit you know, people who are interested, our coaches, our staff here in the building who are interested in running some summer camps. And uh we've we've had some success, so um I have four or five that I plan on putting together a flyer, pamphlet, what have you, uh by next week with hard dates um and numbers. I think, you know, the original one that I shared was a basic one based off of kind of what I would do if I was running a basketball camp. You know, since then, some of these other options have come up, like a strength and conditioning, a full summer, three day a week. So I mean, that, you know, has a little bit different cost structure. One of the camps being a a split, a girls lacrosse and field hockey, you know, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, two different sessions. Can go for one session or both sessions. So those those are a little bit different than the cost structure that I had kind of outlined off of my experience. But as I said, I, you know, I'll have um pamphlets to advertisement, whatever you wanna call it, bless you. Should should have that by next week. People working out their vacations and uh, you know, just trying to not overlap and things like that. So um, you know, what I proposed as far as income and revenue was fifty percent going back to staff in in, you know, some form, and then the other fifty percent coming back into the department, the school. And I assume that we were talking about a revolving account, correct, with with that going back in to help uh, you know, with athletic costs? I know Dr. Burnham asked me about um, you know, specifics as far as who gets paid what and all this sort of stuff, and I I think I, okay. But I think I could outline, you know.
Because we will end up having to post these positions. So we'll know what revenue we have to work with and we'll figure out what the pricing structure is for the different kinds of staff that you'll need to hire for the different camps.
The one thing I was gonna say on that, and I I was just hesitant to do so because, uh, you know, you don't wanna run this at a loss, right? So I I don't think there's a lot of things that you can't predict, is how many students coming and and things like that, so um. That was that. Can I, did you have a question?
I was gonna ask if the committee had questions. I'm sure we have questions, yeah, and comments. So when you're ready.
Sure.
All right, Ms. Archibald?
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. One is, why the K to nine on the girls lacrosse and field hockey, but not on the rest?
Um, that's more so what the coach feels comfortable with doing.
Okay, I.
It it's not, again, that's not set in stone either. I think it would just be more staff or, you know, any of that stuff can be worked with. I literally just took my basketball, one that I've done in the past, so.
Yeah, oh, sure. Um, I just know that I can't keep up with the rules on field hockey, but I'm sure there is some kind of developmentally appropriate field hockey, something you can do with little kids. My other question has to do with the recreation department here in town. Has there been any attempt to work out a schedule that you're not jumping on their weeks when they're planning on running something similar?
I am aware of their two weeks. They have a soccer camp. I have them written down, and then an all sports camp, so I'm aware of those two weeks and.
And we will avoid them.
Correct.
Okay, then I'm okay with it.
Mrs. Scolbry?
How, when you when you ran your basketball camp, how successful was it in terms of getting kids?
It's great.
Okay, like.
Everybody's looking, yeah. And you know, that that goes to kind of the the grade levels that we're talking about, though, right? Like, there's obviously different levels of um instruction.
And do you have the, I'm sure you do, but I just wanna make, do you have all the coaches picked out already? Are they like ready to go?
Nope.
Okay, so who?
It depends on, and this is what I'll tell you. It would depend on the ages of of the kids coming in and how many. Right? I think you can get away with having, you know, the younger grades. Um, you can hire high school student athletes, right? Or college student athletes. If you have the older groups, you might want adult coaches. You know, and and whether you're more heavy with adult coaches or more heavy with high school college students, that depends on which age group is, yeah, larger.
Okay.
Mr. Beardmore?
Hi, um Carol asked, Carol asked my question about the the uh the rec uh parks program. So I'm glad to hear that there's some coordination there. I know that expanding their offerings was part of their budget request for this year, so I I wanna make sure that we're not overly impeding on on their their opportunity. I I do have a question about the the strength and conditioning program. As you know, we have uh a number of varsity athletes that are using our weight room and gym during the summer in preparation for fall sports. Uh and I just wanna make sure that this doesn't impede on that availability of of gym time that uh that we traditionally offered.
It would not, and, you know, hopefully it would work in coordination with that.
What do you mean by working coordination?
Well, if you had, you know, max out day for Nate Sport A, whatever it is, um, you know, that might be countered with a more speed day in that strength and conditioning camp. I don't know. Yeah.
All right, yeah, yeah, I understand. Okay, yeah, I just, what I what I don't, what what I'm concerned about is this being a, you know, a backdoor fee on on high school varsity athletes, uh which sounds like that's not what this is.
No, no, not at all.
Um, I would just add uh the concerns of the other members about, uh, I think keeping that open communication with rec department. We're not stepping on anybody's toes, so I think that uh that is important. Um, I think it's a great idea. I think this is a terrific idea to try to implement, giving not only families and students more opportunities, uh but also creating revenue uh stream for the schools. My concern would be similar to Ms. Archibald's is just the the grade breakdown and the cost breakdown. If it if it can be uniform, great. If it can't, I get it. It maybe it's sport specific and stuff like that. But I think just to consider that, um, I think would be good and just identifying it.
Yeah, I think most of them would be pretty consistent. I think the one that that uh would be definitely different is the strength and conditioning idea that was brought to me, and that's just because it lasts, you know, seven, eight weeks, three days a week. It's a different different format.
Yeah.
You can always have a volleyball camp too, if you're interested. We do have the place for the pools right now, Jim.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've set them up.
Um, I do wanna ask something, though. Uh, so last time that I did propose this, I think it was two weeks ago. I can't, you know, three weeks, I don't know. They all blend together now. Um, and we talked about the revenue coming back in and that things would be reconsidered, you know, at that time. Um, and something stuck out is, I just heard Dr. Burnham talk about a revolving count, not actually counting against the budget, which is, you know, when when I asked that question, it was immediately after we, this committee voted um to not have the athletic secretary. And that twenty thousand dollars was taken from the revolving account, so it's wasn't actually coming from the budget. But my anticipation of this coming together and that question was kind of specifically revolving around that position and the ability to bring that back if revenue was coming in. I think the answer at the time was absolutely, you know, costs will be revisited and if revenue's coming in, then it's a different story than what we're sitting here with two, three weeks ago.
My recommendation on that is we see what the health of the revolving account is.
Right.
We're getting to the close of summer, early August. And if it looks like um it can sustain the portions of your program budget in addition to the secretary position, even if it's not the total number of hours that it is right now, it could sustain a lesser number of hours for the secretary. I think it would be fair and appropriate for the superintendent to come back in and request that uh that position be posted for whatever amount of time the revolving account looks as if it might be able to sustain.
Can I, can I just make one point? I wanna make sure that we're clear. Revolving account does not mean that has no budget impact. The the revolving account you referenced with the uh extended day, that revolving account is self-paid. So like the people pay into it and all the money that's paid in goes out, but there are other revolving accounts that are part of the budget that are not self-funding and they do have a budgetary impact. that are not self-funding and they do have a budgetary impact.
So, the athletic program is not completely self-funded through that revolving account, therefore there is a crossover impact to the budget. The health of that revolving account has a positive impact on the budget in that more of the program can be funded through the revolving account. If the health of the revolving account, uh, is something akin to what it is right now, it can't sustain much of the program itself. Um, we need to see where we're at when we close out the year, um, see what, what the revenues are looking like for the camps, um, once they're offered and we've got registrations. Um, and I know that the committee, the policy subcommittee will be meeting this Friday and will start taking a look at uh, other policies, like the advertising piece, and once that's dropped, what kind of revenue that might generate, it, it, all of these things in combination could be a game changer for the revolving account to get to a healthy place again, because it's not a healthy place right now. Um, and if it is restored to a healthy place, I think, I think it's reasonable to come in with a request to restore that secretary position, even if, even if initially it's not nineteen hours a week, it's only ten hours a week until we see where that can go, but um, I, I think that that's something that's unique, uh, to the athletic department. Uh, as compared to, you know, Mr. Yvonne or Mrs. Squire, we don't, we don't have a way to generate revenue to get building positions back. But in the athletic department, you, you potentially do. So I, I guess it remains to be seen how much revenue we can actually get going here. But I think, I think it should be a, an open consideration at, at that point.
And I mean, that's all I've been asking for, to like, you know, the, the revolving account being totally taken up by transportation and officials has left no room to be able to manage any sort of a budget, right? So this, moving forward and this, these ideas have come about, like, you know, we can have, you know, some management of a budget and make decisions of saying, hey, we can get away with not having this this year, we can bring this back this year and, you know, that secretary position be, I think, enormous.
The other thing is that we've been, conversations with Mr. Ayala, the director of finance for the town, we can actually set up budget lines within the revolving account, um, to limit spending on certain types of, um, costs, so we, we, we can be working in that regard as well.
Mr. Beadmore?
Yeah, I just wanna come out and I, 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 this is all substantial progress where we were even a few months ago with respect to athletics finances. Um, that being said, there are a lot of moving pieces here, right? My understanding was last week, we underfunded athletic transportation substantially without a clear path to bridging that gap. So, you know, I, I, I do think that this is something that we're at, because the, the current and future school committee is gonna have to keep an eye on, on a very close eye on, over the course of the next several months. Look for additional revenue opportunities such as advertising, uh, and potentially others, uh, and, and make these decisions probably, uh, over the course of the summer and, and potentially in later than. Uh, I'm, I'm really concerned that we need a, we need a plan for transportation that is as comprehensive as possible and projects as many of young adults as possible uh, before we consider restoring positions.
Thank you. Ms. Arshinbo?
My only comment about all of this is that what you're proposing seems reasonable to me, as well as Peter's comment about the transportation, you know, all of that is very reasonable, but you realize that the committee will change, so you won't be dealing with most of us, it will be new faces.
Sure.
So, just so you know, we can't promise what they're going to do.
Understood.
No, and I think presenting what you've done, I think will help your case, so.
It would be, this is a really great idea, I think it's important to have these kinds of ideas, 'cause as Dr. Burnham pointed out, you're one of the few places where you can generate revenue. Uh, we can't go and like, shake kids down as they go to the cafeteria. So this is a great idea, it's a really innovative approach. I also think that there are people that are alumni that would make really great instructors, maybe not the lead instructor, but like, an assistant, and that would help generate interest among the kids. I think these are, uh, this is a hopeful thing. It would be really great if you had your own revolving account that was self-sufficient and you could manage it as you want. That would be, that's the idea, like to put it, put it in that way and, and just be like, Kevin, make these kids great. So, this is a step in that direction.
Camps, and I'll just put in, for anybody who's ever worked a camp or hasn't, I mean, they're a lot of work, a lot, a lot of work, but they're a ton of fun during the summer to make happen, it's a good, you know, teachers, I think for teachers and coaches since forever in time have been doing that, so, um, it'd be good to have some activity here in the summer.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's great for the high school programs too, because it's gonna be that feeder program that the kids are gonna get more involved.
Put the T-shirt on them and call them Blue Knights.
Alright, so this is an action item.
I will make the motion to endorse the summer camp, uh, program so we can put it into place.
I will second.
Good discussion. Alright, ready for a roll call, who?
Mr. Beadmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Arshinbo?
Yes.
Mr. Skolbrady?
Yes.
And Mr. Layden?
Yes, thank you everyone. Alright, next up, we have a discussion on the FY twenty-six budget.
Um, so I, I did, uh, share, um, with the committee some documents that I will share with the finance committee that tomorrow evening, we've been asked to return to present the approved budget, which is not very different from the budget from a couple of weeks ago. Um, the only differences are i- in a couple of lines, honestly. Um, that said, um, there were some questions, um, from the finance committee. They had some interest in our school choice numbers, which those were in the slide deck already. Um, there was some interest in our charter school numbers, so I did gather those and I did insert that into uh, the slide deck, uh, immediately following the, the numbers that we had on school choice. But there was also a question relative to the number of positions, um, that have come and gone over the last five years. So, um, I did, um, put together a table that I went back to our budget presentations in previous years, because we always list out any new positions or grant-funded positions, uh, positions that were kind of on hold, should we find any funding source to be available. Um, so there's a, for, for each fiscal year from twenty-two on, there's an add column, a cut column, and a funding column. And in twenty-two, we added, um, three positions, uh, four positions, one of which was partly funded through a revolving account. Uh, we added three positions but cut three positions to offset those three positions. And then there were, um, several that were grant-funded. Um, and then in FY twenty-three, again, we added some positions, but we cut positions in order to get those positions. Um, and then there were a few others that were added as well. Um, in twenty-four, there were a couple of positions added, one that was offset with a cut, and, and then there were others that were grant-funded. And then, of course, in twenty-five, the current year, that's when we started making all the cuts. And then for twenty-six, again, you, I've listed out all of the cuts, and that took an entire slide and three columns to list all of the cuts. Um, I can tell you that, if you go back and kind of tally up all of the, the new positions, um, that we added over time, and then you take a look at all of the positions that we're cutting for next year, coupled with the positions that we cut last year. Last year, those were the Esser grant cuts. Um, so those cuts have kind of already been made, the grant-funded position cuts. Um, but basically, uh, we're losing, I think it was twenty or twenty-one positions, uh, more than the number of positions that we added over the last five years that were not already addressed through grants or not already cut in that same year by cutting a different position. So i- i- it's, we're, overall, positions-wise, the, the district is in, in a worse place than when I found it.
Yeah.
I mean, not exactly position for position, perhaps, because there are some positions that we will still have next year that we did not have when I got here, but overall, the staffing level is going to be less than when I arrived. Which is really sobering.
So, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
What is the purpose of the presentation to FENCON?
I'm not really sure, other than this is our final approved budget. I, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not really sure what-
I s- I sensed from, from-
-the questions I'll get, but-
I sensed they wanted a, a meeting after we actually approved the budget.
I, I just wanna put this out, and this is not you, this is not us. The next superintendent will have a lot of work to do, and being summoned to meetings for a, essentially the same thing, like it's, it seems like this could kinda be an email.
I felt the same way.
And we cannot expect somebody who has all of these things on their plate to do thirty meetings o- a year after hours, I mean, like, every week you're doing something, and I know you're gonna go, but like, honest to God, it's a frickin' email, there's seven slides here, if you can't figure this out, like, just read it. I, I don't think we're gonna find somebody who is willing to do what you have done. And that is both a credit to you and it is a warning to the rest of the town. We cannot keep having this person run around like a chicken with their head cut off. I mean, you did an excellent job, all of you did an excellent job this year, in not producing nine hundred different budgets.
The only four.
Yeah, but it is taxing to our resources and it is problematic for transparency purposes to have all of these things do- done over and over and over again and not move the ball down the road.
So I just wanna add to Mr. Skolbrady's point, if you look at the finance committee meeting agenda last time we went-
Yes.
Monty Tuck was listed after us-
Yes.
And we were supposed to go first, and they changed the order. Mr. Beadmore?
I would advise that the next school committee and the next superintendent have a discussion with the town manager and the finance committee about how best to approach this. Because I suspect that we're gonna find ourselves in a very similar situation next year, the way the law is done, and the requirements that are put on us or warrant, what the finance committee wants to do in terms of, and, and to do their job, which is to advise town meeting on budget, um, requires that they do certain things. Um, and I, I appreciate Mr. Skolbrady's comments, um, but at the same time, um, we're, we're, we're caught in a procedural and regulatory predicament here that I think we gotta figure out, rather than complaining about it, how to fix it. And, and part of that may be forming a new charter committee, uh, to look at the timeline for town meeting and publication dates and all of that, yes. Uh, 'cause a lot of this is unsustainable, and I agree that we're, we're probably spending more time than we need to on some of these things in meetings. Um, specific to the slides that the superintendent surfaced, um, I would strongly recommend that we look at presenting this information graphically, um, with some sort of graphical comparison, maybe a bar graph that includes local-funded and grant-funded positions over, over time. But, but I sus- I suspect that, um, it, it could be more impactful if there's some sort of visual proportional representation, more than just individual lines on, on a chart. Um, and then the, the next most logical question, when you go into that, is okay, uh, what's the breakdown between teachers and administrators and support staff? Um, and, you know, I, I think we need to be as transparent as we can about that. The needs have changed over time, uh, and, and I think we need to be very transparent about what we're doing to, to address those needs and the, the gaps, uh, that we're, we're leaving behind when we, we don't adequately address them with the administrative and support staff that we need.
Any other discussion?
Um, my only comments would be that last year, the finance committee was looking for money for us. The finance committee was strongly our partner in figuring this out. So, um, I agree with Peter, we've gotta figure out a way to streamline this, but I think they are a partner and, um, I think it's important. I, I don't, I don't know that it's necessary to be back there tomorrow night, but I also know that, that they're trying to help. I've spent enough time in that room to know that.
They are, I think it's just a frustrating situation, and hindsight, I, I would've voted, I would've had a vote so that we wouldn't have to go back, 'cause we were gonna vote for the same thing anyways.
Yeah.
I just wanna say, I agree that they're trying to help, the, my concern is that, number one, like Peter said, we're gonna be back here in the future. Number two, I do not think that what you have been asked to do over the past two years is a realistic burden to place on a superintendent. It is, it means that we, we are either gonna get somebody who is promising something that is impossible to deliver or somebody who is going to be stretched incredibly thin. And so, I, I understand that they're our allies, that they're trying to help, but doing these things over and over again, I mean, like, h- how many, how many meetings have you had the past four weeks? It, it's just not, it's not sustainable, I, and like, I, I think we have been incredibly lucky that you have been willing to say, okay, every single time. And if we ask somebody to do all that you have, it, it's, we're not go- I don't, I don't know if we're gonna get lucky again, you know, find somebody that's willing to do what you've done.
I, I will say that I think that there does need to be a conversation broadly, not, not just limited to budget season and the number of meetings, just broadly, um, the level of expectation, right? And, and I, and it's not, it's not just the level of expectation on the superintendent position here in town. There's a level of expectation of the community that I think i- i- it's not unique to the superintendent's position. I, I, I do think that there needs to be a conversation about it, because it's really not, it's not sustainable. And I can say that because i- it's not benefiting me to say that, right? I, I'm not gonna be here. I, I'm not gonna be here. But the level of expectation, it's not sustainable.
And it's-
And again, I know it's not limited to my role. You know, it's not uncommon that there are people in town, whether that be just community members, or members on other boards and committees, that, you know, well, I'd like information on this. Well, I don't have a database that I just type in. Give me a report on such and such, and it kicks out. There's a lot of time spent on the part of multiple people to go digging through archives, to pull information from different places, and then to compile it. I mean, i- you know, like I said, I, we had members of the community asking for, I'd like the information on the cost per whatever for the sports. It's, it's not reasonable that my position, the town manager's position, that just everybody can feel free to send an email and request reports of different kinds, and expect to get them right away. It had always been my practice, um, Mr. Cassidy and I, if another board asked for any information, we would always put that information together, but always present it to the school committee before providing it to another board. Last year with the budget cycle the way it was, this year again. It's just, there, there hasn't been that kind of time to, to do that, and we've been, you know, frantically pulling information together constantly. It's, it's, it's not sustainable, it really is not. And again, I can say that because it's not self-serving. I, I, I am not the one that will get the benefit of, of that statement, because there'll be somebody else sitting in the seat.
So, pardon the interruption, but, but back to my earlier point about the discussions that are happening right now on the budget for next year, and the other meeting that's happening in Bloomberg tonight. And the attempt to put, pull together an override number that has not been systematically thought out or vetted. And we share financial services with the town that needed to be modernized.
Yes.
And, and some of the issues that the superintendent just brought up, there's no reason that we shouldn't be able to produce that, a lot of that information relatively quickly if we had modernized systems.
Yes.
And if these systems haven't been neglected for the last decade, and, and if there was a plan to go and, and bring them forward. I suspect that that isn't going to be captured in whatever is brought forth, over the course of the spring from, from town. And, and I, I think, you know, these things have to be thoughtfully put together, and requested, and justified, and executed on. And, and, you know, I, I, I just wonder if we've given, if, if we're almost gonna be complaining about this in a year from now, right? And, and I, I think that whoever's in charge should be thoughtful about what can we do in the summer and fall to, to put ourselves on a better footing. Because we did not, we were not successful in that this year, that's for sure.
Thank you. Uh, just to connect, I, I know it is a tough connection, but the FY twenty-six, uh, budget and the, the override that is proposed, again, that is the level service minus the town manager's budget, it is a one-time fill of that gap, it is not a long-term plan. And if the, the town is going to, to try to provide a, a long-term plan override, the, the school committee and the superintendent should be in that conversation of that planning of that, um, override article if they decide to do that, in my opinion.
I agree.
Put in the mic, yeah, go ahead.
I, I, I think that, that what Brian said is really important. I think that the override, the citizens' override is another stop-gap measure. And we cannot, I d- I just don't think that there is a political will in the town to have perpetual stop-gaps. I also think that it's probably not a good idea. Like, if you ran your household the way that we're proposing to run Lunenburg, it seems like you're, you're like one disaster away from like true calamity. And I keep thinking about like, the fire alarm system in Turkey Hill, or the roof at Turkey Hill, or not even one of these like antiquated systems that we have, where we're kind of like, eh, it's working. And if something happens, what do we do? Like, I, I just don't know. And I think that it's great that we have it, but I think that if we keep doing it this way, without having a systematic plan, we're just gonna, we're gonna keep, you know, filling the bucket with the hole in it.
Any other discussion on the FY twenty-six budget? All right, seeing none. Next up is the superintendent's search discussion on that. So, we did have our initial meeting with the MASC rep, and we went over guidelines, signed some privacy disclosure agreements. Uh, and then we set the agenda for the rest of the screening committee. So we have posted those meetings. The next one is March twenty-fifth. We'll be finalizing, um, questions, and then go into an executive session with the potential candidates. And then we're meeting again on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth.
Boy, boy.
And there is one more after that, the thirty-first, to potentially, if we need it. And then if we, again, need meetings after that, but that actually puts us a week, uh, ahead, so we're doing actually really well on the timeline.
Thank you.
Carol, did you want to add anything?
I do want to add something. The way the schedule is set up, it is possible, not definite, but possible, that I would be present for all the interviews, but if we need an additional meeting to make a decision, I am unavailable. So, if there is anybody else that could make these meetings-
What day would you not be available, Carol?
After the thirty-first.
After the thirty-first.
So the concern is, if we interview on the thirty-first, and we don't make any final decisions on the thirty-first, we would meet again after the thirty-first to make that final determination which candidates to put forward to the school committee.
But the trick is, you have to do all of them.
Yeah.
You have to do all of them, you'd have to do the twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth, and the thirty-first. If not, there is-
Sit in quietly and not say anything, and then it wouldn't count, like, or, is it an executive session?
It's an executive session, most of these, yeah. They're mostly gonna be interviews, except for the twenty-fifth.
So, either, one of two things would happen. Either I do the three nights of the interviews, and perhaps there aren't so many candidates, and we get them done in time, and we can make a decision on which candidates to move forward to this committee on the thirty-first, or I would leave my recommendations.
With the MASC rep.
With the MASC rep.
And then she would disclose it at our-
And she would disclose it at the future meeting. If people are comfortable with that, that's what I will do. If somebody else can do the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and thirty-first, then, and-
And a potential after meeting.
And a potential after meeting. So it is, it is really up to this board to decide what you want me to do. That's the position I am in, who knew that was gonna happen?
Well, I think that, so, I'm gonna throw it in, because I'm also on the committee. I also, like, very concerned with the schedule and the challenges, and I've had to move, work things around, and I'm hopeful that I will make all the meetings, but that scares me as well, that, like, I could be running late and miss a meeting, because I have after-work activities that get close. But, right, as of now, I can make all the meetings, but-
Can I ask my boss, my wife?
If you want, again, my opinion, so my opinion-
You have to be in all of the-
I would, I would like to see Carol finish it through, I think.
I, I want to see Carol, yeah, if-
I mean, I can-
It's only the-
I can do it.
If we have another meeting.
I mean, one of those nights isn't great, but, I mean, I can do it. And then, um, it would just be the matter of the final decision meeting, I couldn't make it too. But as I, you know, it's done with the rubric. I would leave my rubric
Oh, okay.
with the MASC representative.
So you definitely can't make it, or you wouldn't be able to make it if it were-
I can't make it after the thirty-first.
If we had to meet after the thirty-first.
So-
So again, if we have interviews on the thirty-first, and we don't have enough time to make that final determination of who to put forward to the school committee. Again, if you think about this too, this is just the screening committee, it's a twelve-person committee. We're putting forward candidates towards the, the school committee after this.
Obviously, the decision, the final decision is-
It's still, the bottom decision is up to the school committee.
My preference is you leave-
So that's why I'm not worried about it.
My preference is you leave your
Yes.
Your recommendations with the MASC rep.
Then that's what I would do.
And I think they will, I think they will carry weight. I think your opinion is pretty important to a lot of people.
There's a reason we put you on that subcommittee, and I, I don't want you not on the subcommittee.
Who knew the timing was gonna be what the timing is? So, um, okay, that's fine. And, but I didn't want to do that without permission of this board.
Yeah, I think it was good to have the discussion.
If, I, I didn't realize you were gonna be able to, like, give your notes written. I, I mean, there's no reason, like-
I can, I can give the, the rubric, I can get it.
And she'll see all the interviews, yeah.
Yeah, and I will see all the interviews, no question.
I mean, but ultimately, just, just the, just so I understand the process that you agreed to, having just done something very similar for the town manager process.
Yes.
The committee needs to vote to put names forward as finalists, right?
Yes.
Like, that, that has to happen in procedure.
Yes.
So this rubric that Carol would submit is a data point for, if she is not available to vote, it is a data point for the other members of the committee, that's-
Yes.
Yes.
By the way, and I'm, I'm totally fine.
Carol, this is me, my way of saying-
You'll make the right decisions.
Okay.
You would be better gone than I would be there, present.
Okay.
That is what we are saying, yeah.
Any other questions or discussion on the superintendent's search?
Do we know how many applications?
We will not know, and we cannot discuss it.
Yeah, and again, this, this-
We can't discuss it, because it's confidential.
Before too, is that a lot of candidates will put in on the last day. So we'll see.
And the last day is Friday.
But we, we did know, we did hear that there was applicants, we just don't have the number right now.
We're so much-
But there were applicants, so, it wasn't zero.
Okay.
And again, they will likely come in on the last day.
Most likely.
Okay.
That's definitely a pattern the MASC has stated.
Thank you for that.
Any other discussion on the superintendent's search? All right, next up is the state funding and state delegation. So I put this on, uh, in regards to the several upcoming meetings and the request for letters. So it's kind of open-ended, I did put in a drafted letter that we can revise and edit and send to our legislators. Again, as a, another letter to add to the pile. And then, I was just taking notes today too, and I thought maybe we could potentially have the superintendent use the email to, through the school to request, if anybody wants to write a letter, they could send it to somebody, whether Margaret Scarsdale, Dr. Burnham, myself, Mr. Scullenbrady.
Just a question and a thought. Oftentimes when there's like a letter-writing campaign, like the ACLU or other interest groups will put forward like a template that people can use, and then all people have to do is cut and paste the template, and then put their names in.
So the only downside of that is legislators say this all the time, is-
They don't go back.
Yeah, you want unique. So I think we could give guidelines, like, talk about how the override impacts you, how the X impacts you.
And make sure they put their name and address on it.
Yes.
Yeah, I was very surprised to hear Representative Scarsdale, uh, to hear that she had said she had only gotten the less than twenty letters, I was very surprised at that, and then I realized I had sent her a letter and I hadn't put my address on it. And I went, oh, okay. So, yeah, um, put your name and address where you registered to vote on it, that's gonna be important, I think we need to get that message out. And, uh, we should be able to get more than twenty letters just from here, I would hope.
I would hope.
Um, because there's so many people, like, we've gotten more than that. And they write to us about the need for increased school funding.
They don't always put their address.
Well, no, they write to us, and I'm like, yeah, I know, like, I know that, but it's, we're not the ones who can increase the school funding. So, um, I like this letter, I'm, I think it gives really good bullet points. And I'm gonna try and go on Monday. I'm trying to line up things so I can go on Monday. And then maybe testify on it.
I will be able to go on April eighth.
Great.
You will?
Oh, awesome.
I'm gonna try and go too.
I will not, but, but I will be there on Monday. But I don't know what, I have never been to this kind of thing, I have no idea what to expect. If I can speak, if I can't speak-
So on the eighth you can, but not in the Amherst one.
But not in the Amherst.
Amherst is just going, yeah.
But I'm going. Can we submit letters before Monday?
We can submit letters, that's what we want to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Get people to submit letters. So what do you, what does the committee think on using the, the school email to request, uh, if people are interested in, uh, sending a letter to their state representative, giving them the info and some quick talking points, areas of highlights?
I would, I would agree to do that, I think that's a good idea.
It doesn't scoop the line.
Oh.
I mean, we're trying to get funding for the school, but it's still political. Where is that on that line, is my question.
It's a good question, I think it's the way you-
Phrase it as if.
You have to phrase it very carefully
Yes.
and state if you wish the opportunity, you know, not like you're trying to push it.
Yes.
Because, that's a-
So, my thought, since you threw it out there, I was thinking, myself, Carol, and Kate could work on that then? And we could, you could help with the, making sure we cover the line and
Yeah.
don't make it political. I could draft something up and run it by both of you, and if Kate's good with it, she can send it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, not that I, not that I think there are people that don't want us to have any money, but I-
No, I agree, it's you want to ask the right way and question the right way, yeah.
I'm getting demoralized hearing that, you know, the state legislator's focus is still in transportation, people-
The governor, yeah.
Yeah, it's frustrating that, you know, asked about increasing funding for education, no, I want to focus on a transportation for the state.
That's what I wrote when I wrote all those letters.
And it's frustrating, because we're sitting here going, no, we are struggling, we are desperate, we've been saying this for two years. We've been asking for help, and that's still not the focus.
And I've hit up these areas in different parts of my jobs. But one thing that, when, when state reps and state senators have pressure from their constituents, that's when they can go to the leadership and say, hey, I don't know if I'm gonna even get elected again, because my constituents are not happy. I need help.
Yep.
That's important.
Yeah.
So-
I did receive stuff back from the legislators, you know, so that was hopeful.
I think this is good too, because this is something parents can do, who are feeling frustrated about what's happening. This is a concrete action you can take, especially when you're feeling helpless and frustrated and angry about the cuts, this, this is a concrete thing we can do as parents to help out our kids, so I, I like that it's an action we can take, and tell people that, well, not tell them to take, but let them know it's available to them, should they wish.
Thank you, Mr. Vianma?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts, um, I propose to me and Ellen, I, I actually shared with the select board yesterday. I'm not gonna take the time to read it tonight. I can assure you that nothing, it will surprise any member of this board or those watching tonight. That being said, I, I do think it's important to point out a couple of things. First, is that there is nothing being proposed that I'm aware of, or that has been explicitly explained by any member of- nothing being proposed that I'm aware of or that has been explicitly explained by any member of our delegation that is not going to land us in exactly the same situation next year as we are right now. These are largely stopgap measures that are being proposed in the FY26 state budget that is not going to be resolved until sometime in July or August. It will be beneficial but disruptive to the way we run things over the course of next year to include probably a special town meeting incorporation like we did last year. But nothing sustainable, nothing that can be used for long-term planning until these systems of support get fixed in a sustainable way, in a long-term way, in a permanent way. We are going to continue, we are going to continue to be disrupted by these broken warnings that are in place and the lack of commitment to funding. On the part of the legislature and their leadership and the governor. So, you know, I would be happy to support this letter, but I would also perhaps encourage the chair with our blessing to try to emphasize that point, that the current approach is just going to continue to put us in the same position for at least the next two years until this special blue ribbon magic committee reports out sometime in the summer of 2027. So, hey, that's my two cents.
Thank you. I would be happy to revise that if there's no concerns from the other members.
That's fine.
Any other discussion on state funding and state delegation? All right, next up is reports. Just go down the line.
Sorry, I'm going back. When is the last time we did reports?
A very long time. I can't even remember where I've been.
March 6th, PacCell. Have we done, no, we haven't. PacCell met on Zoom. We're doing they talked about the ACE program and reviewed what the ACE program is about and that was fantastic to hear. They talked about updating the AP form. I didn't go over this. I'm sorry. I got to read my handwriting. And the ongoing regular, yep, that's about it. Sorry, I'm going to go back. I think that's it.
Carol?
Well, I'm trying to find all this information. It's been a while. It's been a while. I I don't know, I can't find the notes. But anyways, FinCom has been doing what FinCom does at this time of year. They've been listening to everyone's budget requests and talking to the departments. We are well aware of what happened the last time we went to FinCom and we will be back there tomorrow night. I know there was one comment that the chair of the FinCom did make to me. There was well, there's been a couple of comments over the last few weeks, but one was specifically last year, we didn't allow other departments to get things so we could give the money to you. He said, we won't do that this year. And I said, I completely understand that because that is what happened. You know, there was something council on aging wanted to add. They couldn't because the money was coming to us. So so that was one comment made. And the other was a clarification which the superintendent did put in the slide deck. A lot of questions were asked at the last meeting about school choice and kids coming in and charter schools and why isn't it more balanced and why don't we have more kids school choicing in and those types of questions, which I tried to answer as best I can. When you are cutting all kinds of things, it doesn't make you more attractive for people to send your children to you. And when our class sizes are quite large, it doesn't make us tend to want to ask people to come in. But I did say that we did not make a decision on this year yet and that decision is due and I couldn't remember June 1st to June 15th, one or the other.
June 1st.
So that was what was school-related at the last finance committee meeting.
PTO has a fundraiser tomorrow. It starts at 3:30 and ends at 7:30. It's at Watch. So if you want your kids to get some energy out and get super sweaty, maybe a little smelly, to raise money for the schools in PTO, take a look at that. I don't remember what the next event is. I missed one meeting and then we tabled them for too long for me to remember. The last one, the last event last year was the car show. I'm not sure where they are in that, so I'm not I won't be able to give you any information beyond that. So, Watch tomorrow at 3:30.
The Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee is working on a presentation for town meeting and the article. It's right around 22 million for the buildings and the town hall and Ritter and the expansion. I do have a running invite to the chair, Michael Ray Jeffries of Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee, to come talk to the the school committee as well. So we can have a discussion on that likely in April. And that was all I had. Mr. Beardmore?
Capital Planning Committee is going to meet tomorrow evening following the finance committee meeting to discuss, to discuss, for instance, the the funding plan and the final recommendation and the warrant article from the town manager for FY26.
All right. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I'll open up the public comment from the public. If you're on Zoom, just raise your hand, your virtual hand. All right, seeing none, I'll open up the public comment from the committee. Mr. Beardmore?
I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the public comment that was made at the beginning of this meeting by Mr. Bowden. Frankly, I was taken aback by it. I was thoroughly impressed, dare I say, a little choked up. I think it was very thoughtful, poignant and brave for a student to come forward with that type of commentary. And I think it is commentary tonight was an enormous credit to his family, himself and our schools. And I'm very appreciative of it and I think it was probably the most poignant public comment that I have heard in my three years on the school committee. And I want to thank him for it and I hope that this message will make its way to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the committee? All right, we have topics for future discussion. Any topics to add?
I think we have plenty of topics. Whenever I want the topics.
Seeing none, I will look for a motion to adjourn at 8:51 PM.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second. Any discussion?
No. All right, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenwell?
Yes.
Mr. Schoolenbreen?
Yes.
And Mr. Layton?
Yes, and one more.
Oh, oh.
She's live right now.
She's live. Mrs. Brozowski?
Yes.
All right, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.